Members online here, so we may as well get started. Madam Clerk.
Good afternoon. Kylie Soden, City Clerk. Today I will presenting, I will be presenting the 2026 proposed budget for the City Clerk Division. I'll highlight, I'll highlight key light, key, excuse me, key responsibilities, summarize the budget, explain changes and outline how this budget supports our mission. The City Clerk's budget starts on page 116 of the Budget Book. The City Clerk Division plays a critical role in ensuring transparency, accountability, and efficient city operations. The Division consists of seven full-time employees and one part-time contract employee. We have the City Clerk and Deputy City Clerk positions. Wendy Kincaid is our Records Coordinator. Joan Baker is our Operations Support Specialist. Tanya Davis and Liz Stoner are Business Licensing and Receipts Clerks. Louisa McGill is our Operations Coordinator, and Dennis Dawson provides technical support services involving city-owned property. Division Overview. We manage Legislative, Historical, and Other Records, including the Records Retention Program, oversee business and liquor licensing and permitting, maintain city-owned property files and affiliate, affiliated database, provide municipal clerk election assistance, serves as clerk to certain city boards and commissions, receipts monies due to the city, provides administrative services, and maintains records for the cemetery complex, oversee city code book supplementation, oversee and maintain public records request data, participate in management of city website and streaming video services for governing body meetings, and prepare city council agendas and minutes. Moving into the Budget Summary. 2026 Proposed Budget: $881,908 as compared to 2025's Budget of $862,846. The breakdown of those dollars, payroll accounts for $711,579, contractual services $166,379, and parts and supplies $3,950. Moving into some of the changes, I am requesting an additional $1,500 for professional development. The increase is for certification efforts for the Deputy Clerk to work towards a certified municipal clerk certification, and I would like to continue to pursue municipal master clerk certification. Another increase is for software, computer software and maintenance. I am requesting an additional $12,153. The justification for the computer software increase includes $4,995 to update the Docuphase program. This is a one-time fee. Docuphase is the city's permanent record software management system. The program hasn't been updated in several years and is becoming inefficient. I'm also requesting $6,413 to update the Granicus streaming video encoder and software. This is also a one-time fee. Currently, our encoder is out of warranty and needs to be updated from time to time. The remaining additional increase accounts for anticipated software annual maintenance increases. There are also a few decreases. Dues and subscriptions decreased by $380 and printing fees reduced by $200. Both of these decreases reflect closer alignment with actual spending. The proposed budget ensures we can continue essential services. It allocates funds to the services and functions that support our mission, which includes maintaining official records, ensuring transparency, and serving the public. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions here on the dais? Mr. Escobell?
Mr. Chair, through you. Madam Clerk, what do we contract out under the contractual services?
What do we contract out in terms of, we just have the one contract employee that in, that does the technical support services for our land-owned city records?
That's what's covered under contractual services?
Uh...
That $166,300?
That, Mr. Escobell, that dollar amount includes other items. It also includes our things such as professional services, which is not just our contract employee, but things such as our municipal code supplementation services. You know, we do our, we have our statute books and, and things that we need. Also, it includes, I believe, our software maintenance account. So those are all kind of lumped into that dollar amount.
And then, still just the, the one position that needs to be filled?
That's correct.
Yep. That's really all I have. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So I see we have a hand raised online. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Dr. Aldrich, you can go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Labor, and through you. I was curious about the recording of meetings and the record-keeping of those meetings. I know that up and on over the last five years, at times, we've had additional help, and I believe that that has sometimes been funded through the Public Information Office primarily. But I'm just wondering if the City Clerk is responsible for city records, which include recordings and all of the documentation of public meetings? If there might not be a reason why your budget does not include some part-time contractual help for doing the telecommunications side or recording and the streaming of these meetings, rather than having, especially, I guess, when the, our administrative person is running the committee meetings?
Through you, Chairman, to Dr. Aldrich. So our office is responsible for the Granicus software, which we do manage kind of on the back end and after the city council meeting. We have recently began some cross-training for one of our employees to perhaps provide some backup for when Jennifer is unavailable.
Okay, thank you.
Next?
Councilman White, you can go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just had a question regarding your comment on statute books. Many offices, I think even LSO, are kind of going to a digital statute books and, and away from the, you know, hard copies. Have we considered doing that? And I wonder if you've looked into that, and if so, if there'd be a cost savings there?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. White. I, I have not looked into that. I'm certainly interested in checking into that, and I'm not sure what a cost savings might look like, but I will check into it.
Thank you. And just one other comment. You know, I know you're relatively new. Lots of, I think we've all seen instances where if there's a change in leadership, sometimes there might be a dip in performance in an office or another. But from my standpoint, I've not seen any from the Clerk's office, and I think you're doing a great job. So congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Quick question on...
Mr. Escobell?
Had a follow-up on Councilman White's comments. Have we checked in with the State Library? Don't they give out free statutes?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Escobell. I'm not aware of that, but I can look into it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Madam Clerk, and we'll move on to the Fire Department.
Good afternoon, Chair and Councilmembers. John Copper, Fire Chief, Cheyenne Fire Rescue. Thank you for the opportunity to present our requests for the fiscal year 2026 budget. Deputy Chief Dyke Soren and I will be covering our requests in the Budget Book on pages 134 to 143, and we will also be discussing on page 96, one-time funding requests. We'll be more than happy to take questions during or at the end, whatever, whatever you prefer. I'd like to start by personally thanking my staff of more than 100 personnel for all their hard work and dedication this last fiscal year. I'm tremendously proud of our entire team that constantly ensures top-quality service, delivery with professionalism, and steadfast dedication to the citizens of Cheyenne. They have done amazing work with special projects, professional development opportunities, community involvement, emergency response, training, risk reduction efforts, and many other programs and projects. It was another busy year for finalizing major projects for Cheyenne Fire Rescue. I'd like to take the opportunity to discuss some accomplishments CFR personnel achieved this last fiscal year. Approximately a month ago, we defended all of our work in front of the Center for Public Safety Excellence Commission, board with over four years of work developing policies, procedures, strategic plans, standards of cover, community risk assessments, relationships with community members and response partners. The board unanimously voted to award our accreditation, paving a future pathway forward for the continued success of Cheyenne Fire Rescue and the Cheyenne community. Our response deployment modifications. Many members worked tirelessly with dispatch to update our response matrix to become more efficient with responses, unit utilization efficiency efforts with improvements like proximity dispatching and eliminating lower acuity calls that don't need an entire crew with a fire truck. The additional staffing with the support unit has also seen positive impacts. Within our system, we have a full year of data that is indicating that we've actually flattened out the response workload across the entire system, thus making the system much more, more efficient. Contract negotiations. Again, we successfully negotiated another collective labor agreement that encapsulates many professional development opportunities for staff and health and wellness initiatives. The relationship with labor and management is excellent. We continue to collaborate with each other on mutual projects and needs. There've been many promotions and retirements this last fiscal year that have given validation to our succession planning efforts and our professional development. Aligning with professional development, a career guide was updated to ensure staff has an understanding and a pathway for succession and promotional opportunities. It gives our employees a roadmap for their career progression. Our Community Risk Reduction Division was busy this last fiscal year with professional development with new inspectors and investigators, newly-developed community CPR classes, community smoke detector installation initiatives, drone operations for solar inspections, investigations, and mapping for pre-fire planning. Training, training and support continue to collaborate with the Wyoming Chiefs Association Consortium Section for the training and education of firefighter recruits across Wyoming. CFR and the State Fire Marshal's Office continue to host the academy for the entire state, which is gaining popularity and increased requests to attend. There were also many wildland team deployments. This year was the first time we deployed with our own vehicle that gave us the opportunity to generate revenue, to supplement the general fund for backfill, and our 1% vehicle fleet account. Many projects were completed as well to include vehicle exhaust systems in Station 1, 2, 6, and Training Facility. All CFR infrastructure now has exhaust systems in place, and if you remember, this was a, a one-time funding project a couple of years ago. It's a major health and safety initiative that we've completed. We've closed out grant-funded projects like rapid intervention team training, acquired training props for training opportunities. We also closed out SCBA fill stations in Stations 1, 3, 4, 5, and Training. We now have fill stations all throughout the community that are strategically placed for use by CFR and response partners. Many staff vehicles were purchased for suppression, CRR, and special operations. The next three engines were also ordered and in the process of being manufactured. Many equipment purchases were made last fiscal year to ensure the services delivered to, within the community were the best. We purchased two properties for future fire station locations, and we also completed a conceptual design for the properties purchased for Stations 2 and 6. We'll be presenting those designs for sixpenny consideration in the coming months when the city and the county establish a timeframe. And then finally, the SAFER Grant continues to provide us the opportunity to improve our staffing while receiving federal funding for three years' worth of salaries and benefits. We are in the last 15 months of the period of performance and are on track to finish in August of 2026. With achievements comes challenges as well, and I'd like to discuss a few challenges as we move forward. Retirements. We've had lots of retirements. With retirements, there's a loss of personnel and knowledge. We continue to work on succession planning and professional development opportunities. We continue to utilize acting academies and leadership opportunities for leadership development, and professional development is always a top priority for our organization as you will see in our budget requests. Funding challenges. That is one thing that this year's legislative session taught us. We continue to explore alternative funding streams like grant opportunities and revenue generation alternatives such as fees for inspections, medical billing for transport, billing for community EMS services, hazardous materials, and expanded wildland opportunities. I strongly believe, and this is a personal opinion, that there was a lost opportunity with the property tax relief given by the legislature. While on paper, it doesn't show a loss in allocation to the city, however, it does indicate a lost opportunity for growth and increased service delivery for emergency services. It also directly impacted our response partners that rely much more heavily on property taxes. Special districts that we partner with must reduce some of their services to lessen the blow. In years past, mutual aid was given and received without concerns of compensation between both parties. However, now with special districts taking a much bigger hit on property taxes, that is now being reevaluated. So before we get into one-time funding requests, are there any questions as we move forward?
Chief, you talked about looking at that relationship with the rural districts in the city. What specifically are you referring to? I mean, is it, are we reaching out to help them at our expense, or are they attempting to do what?
Chair, it's a, it's a mutual relationship. So, and when they have calls that they can't handle with, with the staffing requirements that they have, we help out and vice versa. When we have bigger incidents, and what, lot bigger fires, like the downtown fire and things of that nature. So it's, it's a mutual partnership that can now has, has the possibility of being affected because when a great deal of the special district's budget relies heavily on property tax, they have to look at services to reduce. So, and that's one area that they're looking at.
Who is "they"?
Special districts, Laramie County Fire Authority, Fire District 1, District 5, all the, all the special districts within Laramie County.
Well, I certainly hope we do everything we can to assist. That was really a difficult decision. I'm glad you mentioned it the way you did. Any, any questions? Mr. Escobell?
Mr. Chair, through you. Chief, since you did mention the property tax issue, when we had the mayor here, he did say that the two budgets that took that hit were fire and police. And I hope the press is listening because the message should be sent out pretty loud and clear that while our uncles up on Capitol Hill may have promised the people of the city that tax break, we're the ones writing the checks. And basically, that checking account does not have enough money to provide the three main services the government is supposed to provide, and that's for the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens. So I'll probably be saying that more often as we go through this budget.
Okay. Go ahead, Chief.
Okay. Before we get into divisional budgets, budgets, I'd like to discuss one-time funding requests that the mayor did cover on page 196. We did have five requests. Our first request was for $100,000. We have a 2017 F-550 that we can be refurbished into a Type 6 wildland unit. This would provide the community with a third wildland vehicle to be utilized for fast-moving grass and brush fires that we're seeing all the time now. The current body of the truck was designed to hold technical rescue gear, but ongoing issues with cabinetry doors have created waterproofing problems, so the body can be, can be removed, and a new composite body added with tools, equipment, and hose, as well as a pump and a water tank can be added. This vehicle would also be able to deploy during state and federal fires. Just to give you a comparison, a new vehicle to, of this extent, would be well over $300,000. Our second request is $21,000 for a Stryker Lucas device. As the production of our ambulance is underway, which should be delivered in the next several months, we need to complete several purchases that were outside of the grant funding utilized for the ambulance build, and a Stryker Lucas device is carried on all of our frontline apparatus. What it is, is a hands-free CPR compressor that allows our crews to maintain adequate compressions for CPR. This tool has been extremely effective for getting return of spontaneous circulation on cardiac arrest patients. It's considered an essential piece of equipment for the medicine that we provide. Our third request was for $19,855 for Knox Box Key upgrades. We've recently begun replacing our Knox Box Key vaults in our vehicles due to the technological changes. The Knox Box Company is changing how we access into those vaults with a digital key. Once they're all replaced within our fleet, the electronic option can be offered to the business community as well as residences. We do have five to six vehicles that have been replaced with upgrades. The Knox Box Key system is basically lockbox fastened to the outside of the commercial and residential, residential occupancies to gain access in emergencies. Our fourth request was for $13,960 for a fit tester that we require our firefighters to receive annually. We need to replace our current one to create efficiency for our personnel. We're required to take an annual fit test for any respirator that we utilize. This includes our self-contained breathing apparatus, our SCBA, full face, or half, half face piece, and 95 masks. And then our last request is $40,000 for a plan reviewer vehicle. Currently, our plan reviewer, Jim Shamahorm, is assigned a 2006 Chevy Impala. This vehicle was placed on the vehicle replacement plan for this next upcoming fiscal year. We wish to replace the vehicle with a small, newer crossover SUV-type vehicle that's more fuel-efficient. This vehicle is utilized to meet with customers of the city and complete testing and final inspections for fire suppression and life safety systems, and that is our one-time funding requests on page 96. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Proceed, Chief.
All right. Before we get into each divisional budget request, I'd like to start by giving a, just kind of a brief overview as to the major changes or differences between fiscal year '25 and '26. Our total request for fiscal year '26 was $14,762,460. That is $134,803 or a .9% increase from the previous fiscal year. A great majority of the percentage can be attributed to collective bargaining reclassifications and benefits in the city's compensation plan that was implemented. Also, health and wellness initiatives through improved firefighter medical screenings and exit physicals. Thank you to the mayor and this governing body for making that a priority for our personnel. It's greatly appreciated and recognized. With that, I will start with the Fire Administration Budget on page 134 and 135. The Fire Administration Budget increased $40,472 from fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26. One increase came from the reclassification of a Battalion Chief of Administration position to a Second Deputy Chief position for $14,578 and associated benefits. It's been a goal of this administration, along with the governing body, to establish an executive management team outside the labor agreement, and this completes that goal. There's an $1,800 increase in dues, dues and subscriptions for our new annual accreditation requirements. There's also a $25,000 increase to professional services for firefighter medical evaluation changes made to the collective labor agreement. Changes include more frequent testing based on new recommendations for firefighter health and wellness. It also encapsulates exit physicals for retiring members to ensure health status before departure. Those are the major changes in the Administration Division. We can move on to page 136 of the Budget Book, where Chief Dyke Soren is going to take over.
I did have a question on that.
Yes, sir.
Previous, through you, Mr. Chair, and maybe it's more for the treasurer, but under paid fire A, is, was that money all been set aside and we're putting that money into that pension yearly? And how many more years do we have left on this one?
Through you, Chair. I can answer the first part of that, and yes, that is budgeted annually. But go ahead, Roman.
Hi, Robin Lockman, City Treasurer. So we have paid, in this budget, that'll be four payments that we have made. So we've made two. We'll make one in June of this year and one next year. We have only set aside eight years of payments in the, in reserves. So we will need to have 12 years.
So we'll need to set aside almost a, over another million dollars?
Oh, yes, more than that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Chief, or Assistant Chief.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chief Copper, and good afternoon, members of city council and the citizens joining us today. My name's Andrew Dyke Soren, the Deputy Chief for Cheyenne Fire. I would like to take you through the rest of the sections required in our budget, starting with Fire Support Division on page 136. This Division currently operates with two personnel, a B.C. of Support and a Lieutenant of Training. One of the many purposes of the Division is to ensure operational readiness for fire suppression and EMS services, as well as to be a liaison for station repairs, fleet needs and coordination, purchasing and maintenance of tools and equipment. The Lieutenant of Training provides our recruit academy training and resources to personnel as well. Changes to this Division for fiscal year '26 are to reclassify a firefighter position to a captain. This equates to a difference in the salary from $38,048 and another $8,016 in benefits. This position is greatly needed in this Division to assist with the many projects that occur day-to-day, the need for span of control and more staff on the scene of major incidents, and overall supervision of training staff and recruit academies. Further requests in this Division are a continuation light item for professional development, as investing in our personnel is absolutely vital to future generations of our firefighters. Maintenance and supplies are important for our stations and have asked for an increase due to the addition of another station. These requests are in line with three of the seven strategic goals currently adopted by CFR. They are number two, training; number four, succession planning; and finally, number five, capital asset planning. Continuing on page 138, our Fire Prevention Division has been hard at work this last fiscal year, setting up a more successful public outreach program. This emphasis derives from the community's request that we be more present through various trainings and education out in the community and our schools. This is aligned with strategic goal number seven, community outreach programs. The classes and training provided include starting up our community CPR program, first aid, and partnering with CRMC, and many stop the bleed, stop the bleed training courses. We have fire extinguisher training offered, home fire safety inspections, the Fire Stop O2 Nasocanula program, and others, just to name, name a few. An increase in overtime amounts is being requested to continue to accomplish these programs, as well as fire investigations at a minimal cost to save lives. Our inspectors and plan reviewer were extremely busy with the growth and the development of our city, especially with new construction. In alignment with the other divisions, we respectfully request another reclassification from firefighter to a new deputy fire marshal position. This will assist our fire marshal with fulfilling obligations for planning and development, meetings, and assisting with administrative duties for personnel in the Division. On page 140, you can find our Fire Operations Division. This Division consists of personnel staffed on our fire apparatus each and every day 24/7. This Division provides services such as fire suppression, emergency medical services (to include traffic incidents), hazardous materials response, technical rescue incidents, and so much more. Response to these incidents is accomplished through dedicated firefighters assigned within the Division. Requests for fiscal year '26 changes are aligned with strategic goal number one, staffing model assessment, and strategic goal number four, succession planning. We wish to provide a better span of control as our city grows and wish to take steps towards that through the use of a captain's role on the shift. This reclassification takes three lieutenant positions to a captain position for approximately $22,908. We also recognize that we need to continue to invest in our personnel training and education and request an increase in professional development. More professional services are required of equipment and technology and for our stations, and therefore, we ask for an increase of $5,000. Further requests within this Division are to fill the increased need for overtime for special operations training, as well as small special operations training, as well as small equipment needs that have been identified through our annual program appraisals. As we have seen recent volatility with our grant funding, we wish to stabilize our personnel's ability to train and be equipped with changing technologies. We also feel we can create space for our grant to be used for the whole performance period, which stabilizes long-term projects due to market availability for equipment. This request for overtime and equipment includes our hazmat team, our technical rescue team, our tactical EMS or SWAT medics, and our wildland team. Lastly, we ask for an increase in telecommunications for our wildland team to have satellite internet for mapping guidance and resource access while on deployments. This includes the hardware and a monthly subscription, which we can adjust based on need. Additional equipment monies requested derives from the need to begin a radio replacement program. We leased and ultimately purchased approximately 100 radios, portable, mobile, and base stations, starting in 2019, and completed that payment in fiscal year '24 timeframe. However, technology continues to evolve, and we need to make sure our communication equipment is the strongest and most up-to-date that it can be. Lastly, on Page 142, our Emergency Medical Services Division has been working to ensure we are ready for the various medical incidents we respond to. This includes continuing education for all personnel, certification renewal, and quality assurance for equipment such as cardiac monitors and pharmaceuticals. We enjoy partnerships with CRMC and AMR to work on quality improvement and medical chart review to optimize the continuity and quality of care for our stroke patients, trauma patients, cardiac patients, overdose patients, and where community medicine may help. This particular budget requested an increase of $23,719. The request for funding for fiscal year '26 revolves around two major items: maintenance for AEDs for the various AEDs placed around the city of Cheyenne, as well as an increased cost for medical equipment to stock our forthcoming ambulance. This budget request is in line with strategic goal number six, enhancement of our emergency medical services. With all that, I'd wish to thank our personnel for their continued work in our community each and every day, impacting lives in positive ways and evolving with safety, community needs, and identifying risks and efficiency in our emergency services. Thank you for your time today, and I will give the floor back to Chief Copper for a brief conclusion.
Before we move on, does anybody have any questions for Chief Dykseorn?
Yes, we seem to have one online here.
Dr. Aldrich, if you want to go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Leiborn, through you. I am just curious, Assistant Chief Dykseorn, on Page 141, looking at Fire Operations, it talks about, it shows a line for overtime, and I know that this is something that the department has worked really hard on over the last four and a half years or so of my tenure on the council to try and reduce that amount. I see that that amount is climbing or proposed to climb in 2026, and I'm just wondering if that trend is possibly because of turnover and retirements, or if that's, or increased wages. And then I had a question about the Frontier Days overtime that shows as $20,000 that was adopted in the 2025 budget and is shown in the 2026 budget. I'm looking for that line item in the general fund revenues under intergovernmental on Page 72, and I am not seeing that there, nor am I seeing it on Page 74 under miscellaneous. I see, for instance, police overtime reimbursement, but I don't see anything under fire department reimbursement. So if you could address those two items on Page 141, and then I have an additional question on 143.
Dr. Aldrich, I can take the second question about the overtime for Cheyenne Frontier Days. Typically, that's, all that money goes directly to PD and then into the general fund, so does that answer your question?
It does. I'm just thinking that it might be more helpful to show that as a separate line item, perhaps on our general fund revenues, since we're showing it as a separate line item on your budget breakout for the Fire Operations Division.
Through you, Chair, Robin's in the back shaking her head, yes, so.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Through you, Chair, to Dr. Aldrich, just to address the overtime question, we did have an increase. We typically gauge this based on the amount of staffing present throughout the year of the benefit usage, so that was the increase for this year. But as I spoke to as well, as our grant funding has slowly dwindled as far as our special operations team, we've had more of a need to supplement those trainings with overtimes. We are finding alternative ways to get people to more free-type classes that are offered at the federal level, but even those are coming under scrutiny at this time, so we're just trying to make sure and project conservatively, but not leave us in a bad spot moving forward.
And Chairman Leiborn, through you. My last question is on Page 143 for the Emergency Medical Services Division, where there's been a really big jump in 2025 and then continued for '26 for overtime, where you can see that in 2024 it was listed as $1,917 actual, and we projected $14,000 in 2025. And I'm just wondering what that jump was attributed to and why that's continuing.
Through you, Chair, Dr. Aldrich, that overtime is paid for the ongoing training for our ACLS certification, our PAL certification, and then the other off-hours, meetings that our lieutenant of EMS has to attend. That shift was just moved from operations to that at that time, if I recall, if Chief Copper can remember as well.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to let you guys know, I so appreciate all that you do and always your professionalism, all of your, members of your department. I was just, had the opportunity to be out at Fire Station Number 4 on Saturday afternoon and had a tour that was provided, and really an amazing group of people and individuals that you get to work with every single day. So thank you for all that you do for our community.
Through you, Chair, thank you, Dr. Aldrich.
Dr. Emmons, you can go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman, excuse me. How many AEDs do we have in the community that we support?
Through your chair, to Dr. Emmons, currently, the city has 11, but CRE is looking to put another 14 online. It's just, it's easier for us to own the contract with Stryker. There are also other AEDs present at the Aquatic Center and as well as our ICEN Event Center, but those are a different brand, and I believe the ICEN Event Center one was donated, so it's close to 30 AEDs that are maintained by the city, as well as our Life Pack, our cardiac monitors, the Stryker Lucas devices that we, as we talked about. And then moving forward, there will also be one PowerCot added to that Stryker contract as well for maintenance and repair.
Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That seems to be it from the remote folks. Anyone here have any questions?
I want to echo my one caller from Ward 3, thank you again for your service, guys, and also, I know it's a very dangerous job out there, so thank you.
Mr. Escobell?
Yeah, ditto on that. As we look to the future and the two properties that we have acquired, and I remember the mayor mentioning that the ladder trucks and other apparatuses that we'll need for the future are, it takes like four years to get one once we order it?
Through you, Chair, that is correct. It's going to take up the close to four and a half years. We're currently under contract with Pierce to get three apparatus, and we're looking, I believe, at probably 2029.
And have we paid for those, or do we have an account that we're setting money aside for?
Through you, Chair, that is going to be a sixpenny request. Hopefully, it passes. If not, we've been very conservative with our public safety infrastructure fees, and by that timeframe, there will be enough money in that account to supplement it if we need to, but our primary vision is to have Sixpenny take care of it.
Okay, that was my main concern, is that we do have a Plan B, so a backup plan on that, but again, thank you for everything you do for this community, and I wish there was more we could do for you.
Any further comments? Well, I'm going to tell this department, well done, and I personally very much appreciate the labor negotiations. That's a real important part of what we do, and it was vastly improved over the past few years, and I see that improvement in a lot of different ways with new challenges. Certainly, we never dreamed we'd be having fires in all sorts of different ways year round now, basically, so I'm glad to see you're anticipating that, and thank you very much. So I believe, without any further questions, this work session concludes. Thank you.
Thank you.